May we request Sheikh Ibrahim Ali to lead us in the invocation and please remain standing for the national anthem and the Bangsa Morong.
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Alhamdulillahirobbil alamin. Ar Rahmanurrahim Malikiumittin. Iya kana Abu Dua, iya kana sa'ain. Ihidinas Zara't al-Mustaqim. Zara't alladziina an'amta alaihim. Garilmaqduu bala imbaladzali amin. Allahumma as-salahluna adina na alladzi wa as-madumrina. Wa as-salahluna aduniana alladzi piya ma'ashu. Wa as-salahluna akhrotana lati le'adunay Allah. Allahakirna dzali ma'duhib tarra. Allahumma la'taki'ali addunya akbarhamina wa lamablagh mina ya ar-Rahman. Allahumma robbanatina addunya hassen. Bil akhrotah hassen atwaqina adabannar. Sallallahu alaihi wasallimina Muhammad. Wa adaa adi was-shahbu saram bi rahmatika ya rahmaurrahimin walhamdulillahi rabbil alamin.
Mga kababayan ang bangsa awit ng Pilipinas.
Ayang magiliw, ayang magiliw. Telasang si Rakan, Rakan ng puso sa diti po'y buhay. Lu pang hinihira, uyagka ng mahitin. Sa manluru pi, ikapasi sinil. Sanagadap tutok sa si boyat, salami kau pagkao. Ay yunadamp tulakawin sa pantayang minamahal. Ang isakap, at kawan, uyagka dun, ay anati ini. Ang pituwina paro nga kayda, ang may di ba't ibinig. Lu manapalo nga kwaladik pa'sin ka, uyagka nitsa. Simulaon hanggang ngayon, isang daging layon. Ang isaan pa kunglon, karitingan ay bagukdo. Ngayo tayo mula sa hamon ng daktar, diyamo sa paganim na uhaan lang. Binagaku sa puso at paniniwala, ang inha'wa pa sa kawatahan. Bangsa Moro ay tanun pay, mula ng pawis suwat buhay. Kabaya pan, katahukan, ay atin ang nakantay. Alhamdulillah, alhamdulillah. Pagpalayin bangsa Moro. Bangsa Moro, bangsa Moro, lagi kang mamahalig. Walang pipigil sa damdamin, mga pangako'y tutuparin. Ang buhay kami sayoy maparantay, mananati sa puso ti sipan. Hangga'apung muting kayha nagpuis ng buhay, nasapiling ka ng may kapal. Bangsa Moro ay tanun pay, mula ng pawis suwat buhay. Kabaya pan, katahukan, ay atin ang nakantay. Alhamdulillah, alhamdulillah. Pagpalayin bangsa Moro.
Secretariat proceed with the roll call. Roll call of the Honorable Members of BTA Parliament: Abbas Akmad, Abbas Harun, Abbas Basit, Abu Mujib, Alamiya Liza, Alauden Mosber, Ali Ibrahim, Ali Lanang Junior, Ali Eddy, Ambolutu Suarto, Aminuddin Abdullahjiz, Ambatuhan Baintan, Anayatin Susana, Antao Muhammad Kelly, Arnado Marian, Asnawi Dan, Babau Ali Montaha, Balidong Pangalian, Basman Anna Tarhata, Kandaw Bay Maleha, Ylanggalan Hasimi, Dumama Alba Sya'ilaia, Ibrahim Ahud, Ismail Suarto, Astino Matarol, Gayak Abdawwah, Gera Edward, Haji Abdawwah Khalid, Hasim Abdawwah, Hasan Hatimil, Ikbal Mohager, Ismail Rasul, Tijuri Raissa, Yakilan Muslimin, Chikiri Albakin, Kahalan Den Martin, Karun Faisal, Lim John Anthony, Luong Benjamin, Luong Don Mustafa, Lorena Jose, Makapaarab Dongwa, Makasalong Marjani, Makatanong Amrosi, Maglangit Tarhata, Malik Hamid, Mantawil Bailing, Mastura Esyop, Matalan Japara Polo Micael, Awalil Amil Bahar, Pindosa Freylin, Nitimbang Michael, Nitimbang Tawakal, Viswari Abdul Karim, Viswari Norreda, Mitmo Grasol Junior, Munios Joseing, Uranon Swae, Pakasam Obaida, Pak Abdul Wahab, Pangandaman Nabila Margarita, Parkasio Randolph, Piyang Ramon Senior, Ramos Jamila, Salindab Sayid, Salik Ali, Sanki Ali, Semah Omar Yaser, Semah Romeo, Sik Sayid, Silongan Aida, Sinolending Kadil Junior, Sulaiman Ali, Tago Faisalin, Tan Nabil, Usman Adspar, Utto Basil, Uyoyon Si Tifahani, Yakub Muhammad.
Bismillah wabihiinas ta'ain. Assalamualaikum warakmatullahi wabarakatuh. Mr Speaker, on the basis of the roll call, with forty-two members, the parliament responded to the call. We therefore certify the presence of forum in today's session, Mr Speaker. Thank you.
With forty-two members physically present and with the certification of the Secretary General of the existence of forum, we will proceed with today's oral business. One minute suspension.
Mr. Speaker, assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Uh, thank you for, um... coming to today's session. And members of the parliament, I would like to disp- move to dispense with the reading of the journal of the previous session, Journal number thirty-three of December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-three, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to approve, to dispense with the reading of the previous, uh, sessions. And, uh, you're the candidate, this same, there being no objection, this same, Mr. Speaker, by approval.
I further move that we approve Journal number thirty-three of December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-three session, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to approve Journal of the previous session, you're the candidate, there being no objection, this same, Mr. Speaker, by approval.
Mr. Speaker, for bills on first reading, we have none for today. So we move on to resolutions, the first one being proposed resolution number four-hundred-twenty-five. May we request the secretariat to please read the title, the author, and the co-authors?
The secretariat is directed to read the proposed resolution four-to-five together with its authors and the title of the resolution.
Proposed resolution number four-hundred-twenty-five entitled "Resolution Urging the Ministries, Agencies, and Offices of the Bangsa Moro Government to Gradually Shift to the Self-Sustaining Programs and Projects from Dull Out Interventions." Author, member of the parliament, Baytan Angpatuan. Co-authors, members of parliament Liza Alamiya, Amil Bahar Mawalin, Suarto Ambuluto, Don Mustafa Loong, Rasol Mitmo Junior, Rasul Ismail, Tawakal Mitimbang, Japara Polo Mikael Matalam, Michael Mitimbang, City Fahani Uyoyon, Khalid Haji Abdawah, and Basir Utu.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer proposed resolution number four-hundred-twenty-five to the Committee on Rules.
There is a motion to refer proposed res- uh, to refer proposed resolution number four-to-five to the Committee on Rules, you're the candidate, there being no objection, this same, Mr. Speaker, by approval.
Next, Mr. Speaker, is proposed resolution number four-hundred-sixty-five. May we request the secretariat to please read the title, the author, and the co-authors?
The secretariat is read, uh, uh, is directed to read proposed resolution number four-sixty-five together with its title and author.
Proposed resolution number four-hundred-sixty-five entitled "Resolution Congratulating Lana Odell Soorsykan District Representative Yaser Alonto Balindong on his election as a Deputy Speaker for the nineteenth Congress of the Philippine House of Representatives." Author, member of parliament, Omar Yaser Semma. Co-authors, members of parliament, Harun Abbas, Susana Anayatin, and Faisal Karo.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we treat proposed resolution number four-hundred-sixty-five as a simple resolution.
There is a motion to trade the proposed resolution number four- four-sixty-five by simple resolution, you're the candidate, there being no objection, this same, Mr. Speaker, by approval.
Mr. Speaker, may we recognize, and I so move that we recognize Deputy Speaker Omar Yaser Semma as to deliver his authorship.
Uh, Deputy Speaker Omar Yaser Semma is recognized for the sponsorship of proposed resolution number four-sixty-five.
Yes, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Speaker, thank you, floor leader. Before I proceed to say something on the, on my proposed resolution, I would welcome, uh, each and everyone who would interest themselves to be part of this resolution uh, to show our, uh, support to the, uh, uh, Deputy Speaker, uh, Yaser Alonto Balindong. Uh, Mr. Speaker, I, there is nothing to, uh, say so much about, uh, MP Yaser Alonto Balindong except that, uh, in his, uh, young years in the, uh, 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 House of Representatives in the lower house. He has achieved so much, even, I think, surpassing that of the achievement of, uh, uh, the father. His father, yeah. The, he, in his younger year, in his second term as, uh, as a member of, uh, the House of Representatives, he has already been elected as deputy speaker. And that is something that, uh, I believe even the, uh, father is proud of right now. And, uh, however, the most important achievement of, uh, Congressman Balindong probably, I think, is being one of the co-chairs of the very important intergovernmental mechanism uh, between the, uh, Philippine Congress and the Bangsa Moro Parliament. The, it is the Philippine Congress and the Bangsa Moro Parliament forum, where, of course, he also co-chairs the same with the Senate, the, 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 the Senate President and the, uh, uh, of course, the Speaker of the Bangsa Moro, uh, Parliament. But nonetheless, Mr. Speaker, uh, uh, another important, uh, aspect of the, uh, or accomplishment of, uh, Congressman Balindong is, is being the chair of, uh, uh, the committee on, the House Committee on Mindanao Affairs. And, uh, as such, I believe that committee also, uh, concerns itself with matters that pertain to the, uh, uh, pertain to the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Musliminao being itself, being the barbeque here in Mindanao also. And, uh, I believe, uh, this resolution, if approved by the, the parliament, will further, uh, strengthen his, uh, uh, his stance in the, uh, House of Representatives and, uh, on that basis alone, Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Mr. Speaker, I invoke the support of the, uh, members of the House of, uh, of the parliament to, uh, approve and adopt this resolution in total unless there are, uh, more beautiful words that we can include in this, uh, uh, proposed resolution. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Madam Chair, uh, Madam Floor Leader.
Okay, Mr. Speaker, uh, may we recognize MP Khalid Haji Abdullah for some manifestation?
MP Khalid Abdullah, recognized.
Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi halawa barakatuh. Just a manifestation that all members of the parliament be part of this resolution, Mr. Speaker.
I have no objection, uh, to that, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, Secretariat, uh, please take note that, uh, all members of the parliament be part of this, uh, resolution.
Mr. Speaker, uh, there being no interpolation, Mr. Speaker, I move that we dispense with the period of interpolation and debate as well as the period of amendments, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to dispense with the interpolation and debate period of amendments. Uh, you're the candidate, there being no objection, there, this same, Mr. Speaker, by approval.
I move to approve proposed resolution number four-hundred-sixty-five, uh, which would, would include the manifestation that all members present, uh, be part of it, Mr. Speaker, subject to style.
There, there is a motion to approve proposed resolution number four-sixty-five subject to style. You're the candidate, there being no objection, this same, Mr. Speaker, by approval.
Thank you. Mr. Speaker, next.
You, Madam Floor Leader. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Proposed resolution number four-hundred-seventy-five, may we request the secretariat to please read the title, the author, and the co-authors?
The, uh, secretariat is directed to read proposed resolution number four-seventy-five together with, with the title and the authors.
Proposed resolution number four-hundred-seventy-five entitled "Resolution Congratulating and Commanding Abdurrahim Moh Saleh Abdawah, Muhammad Saleh Abdawah for ranking tenth in the November twenty-twenty-three Nursing Licenseal Examination, NLE, and all Bangsa Moro Passers." Author, member of, of the parliament, Kadil Silulindi Junior. Co-authors, members of the parliament, Ahmad Abbas, Mosber Alauden, Eddie Ali, Susana Anayatin, Dan Asnawi, Hasim Edilanggalan, Den Martin Kahalan, Tarhata Maglangit, Abdul Wahab, Pak Ramon Piyang Senior, Jamila Ramos, and Basir Utu.
Mr. S- Mr. Speaker, on account of the non-availability of the principal author of this princip- of proposed resolution, Mr. Speaker, I move that we defer, um, consideration of the proposed resolution, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to defer proposed resolution number four-seventy-five as stated by the floor leader. You're the candidate, there being no objection, this same, Mr. Speaker, by approval.
Next, Mr. Speaker, is proposed resolution number hun- number four-hundred-seventy-nine, which I would request, Mr. Speaker, that be, it be read together with proposed resolution number four-hundred-eighty-six, uh, s- since they talk of the same subject matter. Mr. Speaker, I move that I request the secretary to please read both resolutions.
The secretariat is lo- uh, is directed to read, uh, because this in it, it has, uh, these same subject matters, proposed resolution number four-seventy-nine and four-eighty-six, uh, together with its authors.
Proposed resolution number four-hundred-seventy-nine entitled "Resolution Commending and Congratulating Member of Parliament, MP Attorney Sya'ila Haddam Mama Alba for being designated as the new Minister of the Ministry of Interior and Local Government and other members of parliament who were designated and re-designated as members of the cabinet." Author, member of parliament, Baytan Angpatuan. Co-authors, members of parliament, Liza Alamiya, Amil Bahar Mawalin, Suarto Ambuluto, Don Mustafa Loong, Rasol Mitmo Junior, and Rasul Ismail. Proposed resolution number four-hundred-eighty-six entitled "Resolution Expressing Warm Congratulations and Salutations to MP Attorney Sya'ila Haddam Mama Alba." Authors, members of parliament, Baileng Mantawil, Aida Sinu- Aida Silungan, Marian Arnado, Lanang Ali Junior, Marjani Makasalong, Suarto Ismail, Matarol Estino, Mosber Alauden, Abdawah Hasim, Tawakal Mitimbang, Eddie Ali, Muhammad Kelly Antao, Mujib Abu, Basir Utu, Swae Buranon, Abdawah Gayak, Said Salindab, Ibrahim Ali, Muhammad Yakub, Ali Salik, and Basit Abbas.
Mr. Speaker, uh, let's, I move that we treat proposed resolution number four-hundred-seventy-nine as a simple resolution.
Together with the proposed resolution number forty-six.
Mr. Speaker, upon perusal, uh, they speak, uh, the first res- yeah. Uh, the first one includes the other members of the parliament who are designated and re-designated, whereas the other proposed resolution only mentions of one, Mr. Speaker. So, uh, I move that we treat proposed resolution number four-hundred-seventy-nine as a simple resolution.
There is a motion to trade proposed resolution number four-seventy-nine as a simple resolution, you're the candidate, there being no objection, this same, Mr. Speaker, by approval.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize, uh, the principal author of this proposed resolution, member of the parliament, Baytan Angpatuan.
The principal author of the proposed resolution, MP Baytan Angpatuan is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, floor leader. Thank you, Mister Speaker, Floor Leader.
Um thank you, Mister Speaker, Floor Leader. Um I cannot help myself but to um drop this resolution because um isa sa ating mga leaders dito sa ating um chamber ay uh naatasan na kumuha o mga siwa sa isang napakalaking ministry. But um nonetheless, Mister Speaker, I would like to um read my prepared uh speech, um Mister Speaker. Bismillah, Rahman, and Rahim. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wa barakatuh. It is my honor to sponsor proposed resolution number four hundred seventy nine entitled Resolution Commending and Congratulating Member of Parliament Attorney Siya Elaiha Dumama Alba for being designated as the new Minister of the Ministry of Interior and Local Government and other members of Parliament who were designated and re-designated as members of the Cabinet. Mister Speaker, the Chief Minister, if you recall, uh Mister Speaker, the Chief Minister issued memorandum circular number one eight nine series of twenty twenty three directing all senior officials to tender their courtesy direction resignation in order for him to have a free hand to reorganize his cabinet to further improve the services of the Bangsa Moro Aga- uh Autonomous Region. Afterwards, Mister Speaker, the Chief Minister Ahud Balawag Ibrahim designated our very own our very own floor of uh Floor Leader a woman, and not just a woman, and articulate that woman as the new Minister of the Ministry of Interior and Local Government, replacing former Minister Nagib, Attorney Nagib Sinarimbo. Mister Speaker, from amongst the achievements of um MP Dumama Alba, she earned her Bachelor of Arts in Public Administration at the University of the Philippines Dileman and finished her law degree at San Beda Minyola in two thousand seven. She was thereafter admitted to the Philippine Bar in two thousand eight. MP Attorney Dumama Alba is the Asia Foundation Development Fellow Alumni. She placed third in the Special Sharia Bar Examinations in twenty eighteen. She was also part of the twenty nineteen Obama Leaders Class in the Asia Tipler Asia Generation T List twenty twenty Leaders of Tomorrow alongside being an Asia Peace Innovators Fellow twenty twenty and a United States International Visitors Leadership Program Grantee in twenty twenty one. MP Attorney Dumama Alba was a member of the coordinating team for the uh transition or C T forty representing the Moro Islamic Liberation Front which drafted the transition plan from the ARM to BARM in twenty nineteen eighteen to twenty nineteen. She also served as the Attorney Sixth of the Civil Service Commission Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao before being appointed as the Bangsa Moro Attorney General in twenty nineteen and Member of Parliament in twenty twenty two. MP Attorney Dumama Alba is a member of the Bangsa Moro Transition Authority and Interior Government of the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region during the second phase of the transition period. She serves as the Floor Leader of this Parliament. Uh as uh the Floor Leader, she is also an official member of all Bangsa Moro Parliament's committees. MP Attorney Dumama Alba is of course, our Chairperson of the Par- uh Bangsa Moro Parliament's Committee on Rules and uh Vice Chairperson of the Statutory Committee on Bangsa Moro Justice System. She served as the Bangsa Moro Attorney General of the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao since its creation in twenty nineteen. As the Bangsa Moro Attorney General, she had been designated as Focal Person for justice programs in the Bangsa Mu- in the B A R M M. Her office has furthered initiatives in improving and strengthening Sharia as a justice system as well as promoting the tri-justice system in the BARM. Attorney Dumama Alba is also also the head secretariat of the Intergovernmental Relations Body, a mechanism for coordination and coordini- for co- cooperation and coordination between the national government and the Bangsa Moro government. She assumed the leadership of one of the biggest ministries of the Bangsa Mu- go- Bangsa Moro government, the Ministry of the Interior and Local Government on December seven twenty twenty three twenty three. Mister Speaker, aside from um MP Attorney Dumama Alba, um the the Chief Minister also um designated MP At- Attorney Ana Tarata as Basman as the new Attorney General replacing former Attorney General Attorney Siya Elijah Dumama Alba. Also, Mister Speaker, MP Doctor Susana Anayatin was designated as the new Executive Director of the Office of the Settler Communities, replacing former Executive Director Professor Edgar Ramilos. Also, Mister Speaker, MP Said M. Shek was designated as the new Assistant Cabinet Secretary and Program Manager of the Marawi Rehabilitation Program, replacing former Assistant Cabinet Secretary MP Ana Tarhata Basman. Also, Mister Speaker, and as can be gleaned in um the post coming uh uh post of the various uh um social media, of course, the official social um media of the Office of the Chief Minister and the offices, we also would like to acknowledge the uh redesignation of uh almost all of the ministries and offices. And uh I think uh most of the ministries, I will not enumerate anymore, um we all know all of them. But had I missed a someone because uh uh I filed this resolution as early as December fifteen and uh if I didn't include your names in the list that I have now in the whereas uh resolution uh whereas of this resolution, uh my apology because I didn't see the names uh in the um in the uh websites of the ministries and offices and even in the office of the Chief Minister. But I know that some of those not listed here are were also re- re-designated. Um Mister Speaker, uh with that note, um Mister Speaker, um I would like to enjoin everyone to support this resolution and uh we'd like to thank everyone and congratulate uh all the uh officials, especially the Minister of the M I N G. Thank you very much, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, let me take over considering that the subject matter of the resolution would like to inhibit herself. So may I uh be uh I move to open the period of uh interpolation and uh may I recognize uh MP Jamila Ramos?
Jamila Ramos is uh MP Jamila Ramos is recognized.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Audubilahim minashitani Rajhim. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Ang hindi po ako mag-interpelate pero ito po ay manifestasyon ng pagbati at pagsuporta sa ating kagalanggalang na B T A Floor Leader, uh Attorney Siya Elaiha Dumama Alba sa kanyang pagkakatalaga bilang bagong Minister ng Ministry of the Interior and Local Government. Bilang kasabahang membro ng Parlamento, Mister Speaker, ako po ay humahanga sa kanyang angking potensials. Hindi lang po bilang isang magaling namang babatas, kundi bilang isang leader na babae. Sa kanya pong binigay na guidance sa Committee on Women, Youth, Children, and Persons with Disabilities. Sa kanyang aktibong partisipasyon sa lahat ng mga issues at activities. Kasama na po dito ang pagsusulong at pagsuporta sa boses ng mga kababaihan at kabataan. At ngayon po, ngayon din po ang kanyang pagiging very inclusive at approachable at ngayon din ang kanyang effective na pagahandle ng flow ng ating plenary at ngayon po ay um para maataasan siya sa isa sa pinakamalaking ahensya ng ating Bangsa Moro government. Uh naniniwala po ako na kaya niya pong gampanan ang kanyang mga tungkulin. Mister Speaker, ang um kanyang pagkakatalaga ay isang manifestasyon na kaya po talaga ng mga kababaihan na mamuno. No? Ako po ay uh naniniwala na kanyang magagampana ng kanyang tungkulin ng buong katapatan at kahusayan. Kung kaya't Mister Speaker, uh nakita ko pong hindi po ako nakasama sa authors or co-authors na mga re- ng consolidated resolution, gusto ko pong i-associate ang aking sarili bilang kasapi ng uh resolution na ito, Mister Speaker. So muli ang aking pagbati sa ating um bagong talaga na Minister ng M I L G Attorney Siya Elaiha Dumama at ngayon din ang aking malakas sa suporta sa ibang mga kasabahan nating membro ng Parliament na 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 designate at ngayon din ang pagpapatuloy ng mga ibang mga kasamahan din natin bilang mga kawanin ng ating uh gabinete ng ating butihin Chief Minister muli. My congratulations to you all. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wa barakatu.
Wassalamu alaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wa barakatu.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. May we uh thank you, MP uh Ramos. May Mister Speaker, may we recognize MP Khalid Abdullah?
MP Khalid Abdullah is recognized.
Yes, again, Mister Speaker, this is not an uh interpolation, but uh I would like to s- say small things to Minister Laia. First and foremost, I would like to extend my heartfelt congrat- congratulations to our esteemed Majority Floor Leader Laia Laia Dumama Alba on her appointment as Minister of M I L G. She was the first MP to show kindness and support to me when I was new to this role. And it's it's and and it is certain that the majority of the members of this themed chamber share in my joy for Minister Laia's well-deserved designation. Therefore, I am truly delighted to be part of this resolution that congratulates Ma'am F N. I wholeheartedly join others in expressing support for the aforementioned resolutions. Thank you. Congratulations, Ma'am.
Mister Speaker, there being no uh interpreter, I move to terminate the I I move to the dispense with the period of uh interpolation and uh amendment.
There is a motion to dispense with the period of interpolation and the period of amendments, you will see candid, the same issue by approve.
Mister Speaker, I move to approve uh proposed resolution four seventy nine.
There is a motion to approve proposed resolution four seventy nine, you will see candid, there being no objection, the same issue by approve.
Now, uh um Mister Speaker, we move to uh consideration of uh proposed resolution four eighty six. Uh may we recognize um MP Baylang S. Mantawil for her sponsorship speech?
MP Mantawil for the sponsor- sponsorship speech support uh proposed resolution four eighty six.
Thank you very much, Mister Speaker. Honorable Speaker, Attorney Pangalian Balindong, distinguished members of the Bangsa Moro Parliament, staff and guests. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wa barakatu ho. Today is a momentous day as we come together to acknowledge and celebrate a significant milestone in our journey towards progress and inclusivity within the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao. I am here today standing before you as a lady member of this esteemed Parliament, honored to author a resolution that marks a historic occasion. It is with great pleasure and pride that I present to you a resolution expressing our heartfelt congratulations and warm welcome to a trailblazer, a leader, and now the newly appointed Minister of the Ministry of the Interior and Local Government or M I L G, none other than our esteemed colleague, the Floor Leader, MP Attorney Siya Elaiha B. Dumama Alba. MP Attorney Siya Elaiha B. Dumama Alba has not only demonstrated unparalleled dedication, but has shattered barriers by becoming the first female Minister of M I L G. Her journey marked by competence, resilience, and commitment has led us to this moment where we witnessed history being made. As the Bangsa Moro Parliament Floor Leader, MP Siya Elaiha Dumama Alba has exemplified the qualities we seek in a leader: foresight, compassion, and unwavering commitment to the betterment of our region. Today, we extend our warmest congratulations recognized her, recognizing her not only as a woman of substance, but as a leader poised to make a lasting impact on the tra- on the trajectory of our beloved Bangsa Moro. Para sa kaalaman ng lahat ng nakakaraming Bangsa Moro, si MP Siya Elaiha Dumama Alba was born in the heart of the Bangsa Moro, specifically in Cotabato City. She is the third of the fourth siblings of the Undersecretary of the Department of Health, Doctor Abdullah Okang Dumama and the Bangsa Moro Board of Investment Queen, sabi ko nga, By Farida Birwar. Two of her siblings, her ate and kuya, are renowned doctors and the youngest of them is a judetik engineer. Sa makatwid, Minister Dumama comes from a family of professionals and at par excellence. Ika nga di mamumunga ng santol ang mangga. She finished her elementary and secondary years in the prestigious Albert Einstein School and garnered her bachelor degree in University of the Philippines Dileman Quezon City. Consecutively, finished her law degree at the San Beda College, Mindyola, Manila, and eventually passed the bar exam. Minister Alba is a proud, loving mother of two beautiful kids, married to a sports enthusi- enthusiast, a strong woman pero hindi naman siya nanununtok ng asawa, but an obedient wife as what Muslim women should be. He is the Executive Director of Bangsa Moro Sports Commission, Director Shaliwadi Badjunaid Alba. At madali lang po itong makita dahil napakatangkad niya. In closing, let this resolution stand as a testament to our unity, our commitment to progress, and our recognition of the remarkable individuals who shaped the destiny of the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region. May the tenure of Minister Attorney Siya Elaiha Dumama Alba be marked by continued success, innovation, and prosperity to our beloved region. innovation, and prosperity to our beloved region. Thank you very much, and may peace and blessings be upon us all.
Thank you, me- thank you, MP Baieng. Uh, Mr. Speaker, I move to ter- uh to dispense with the period of interpolation and debate.
There is a motion to dispense with the interpolation and debate. Juriscan they there being no objection, decide by approval?
Mr. Speaker, I move to approve uh resolution number four eighty-six.
There is a motion to approve resolution number four eighty-six. Juriscan they there being no objection, decide by approval?
Thank you very much. Now, may I turn over the floor to our uh distinguished floor leader?
Thank you. Uh, thank you po sa lahat. Maraming salamat po ulit. Uh, it it has been an honor to serve with you in this parliament.
Next, Mr. Speaker, is proposed resolution number four hundred eighty-two. May we request the secretariat to please read the title, the author, and the author?
The secretariat is directed to read the title of proposed resolution number four eighty-two together with its authors.
Proposed resolution number four hundred eighty-two entitled, A Resolution Congratulating the Three Siblings, Dr. Ayesha Safiya Tamang Majid, Dr. Serfa Nasrin Tamang Majid, and Dr. Dana Tamang Majid for Passing the Resolution Twenty Twenty-Three Physician Licenseure Examinations. Author, Member of the Parliament, Susana Anayatin.
Mr. Speaker, I would to tr- I move that we treat proposed resolution number four hundred eighty-two as a simple resolution.
There is a motion to treat proposed resolution number forty- four eighty-two as a simple resolution. Juriscan they there being no objection, decide by approval?
Mr. Speaker, may we recognize and I so move to recognize author of the princip- uh proposed resolution four hundred eighty-two, MP Susana Anayatin.
MP Susana Anayatin is recognized for sponsorship speech.
Good afternoon, everyone. Mr. Speaker, assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wa barakatu'ho. Mr. Speaker, it is said that excellence is achieved through self-determination and effort. Determined individuals demonstrates a strong sense of resilience, discipline, and motivation required to overcome challenges. However, it cannot be denied by the family to some extent in choices and priorities life. Consequently, they share these values with each other, such as a commitment to education and the importance of collaboration and support. Mr. Speaker, on November ten, twenty twenty-three, the twins Ayesha Safiya Tima Jid and Serfa Nasrin Tima Jid, along with their younger sibling, Dana Tima Jid from Holosulo, successfully passed the physician licensure examination. The siblings have set a record as the first siblings to simultaneously pass the same examination. Mr. Speaker, the success of the Tima Jid siblings is an inspiration and should be acknowledged by the parliament. This demonstrates that guided by the right importance on family values, excellence, and success are expected outcomes. In conclusion, Mr. Speaker, the adoption of this resolution is a fitting and necessary gesture to honor the outstanding achievements of Dr. Ayesha Safiya Tamang Majid, Dr. Safiya Nasrin Tamang Majid, and Dr. Dana Tamang Majid in passing the twenty twenty-three physician licensure examination. It serves to inspires, encourages excellence, and celebrates their academic success and highlights the importance of education as a means of personal and social advancement. Hence, the earnest passage of this resolution is sought. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, Mr. Speaker, there being no interpolators, Mr. Speaker, I move that we at dispense with the period of interpolation and debate as well as the period of amendment.
There is a motion to dispense with the period of interpolation and debate and the period of amendments. Juriscan they there being no objection, decide by approval?
I move that we approve proposed resolution number four hundred eighty-two subject to style if and.
There is a motion to approve proposed resolution number four eighty-two. Uh, juriscan they there being no objection, decide by approval?
Thank you. Mr. Speaker, we move to proposed resolution four hundred eighty-seven. May we request the secretariat to please read the title, the author, and.
The secretariat is directed to read the propose the title of proposed issue number four four eighty-seven and its authors.
Resolution number four hundred eighty-seven entitled, Resolution Expressing utmost appreciation, gratitude, and commendation to former Minister Attorney Nagib G. Sinarimbo. Authors, Members of the Parliament, Baieng Mantawil, Ayda Silungan, Mary Ann Hernado, Siya Eliah Dumama Albang, Obaida Pakasam, Raiza Jaduri, Anita Rahatabasman, Lanang Ali Junior, Marjani Magasalong, Suarto Ismael, Matarulistino, Mosbir Elaudin, Abdobwahasim Tawakalmitimbang, Edi Ali, Muhammad Kelly Antawong, Mujib Abu, Basir Utu Muha- Swaeep Uranon, Abdobwagayak, Said Alim Ali, Muhammad Yakup, Ali Salik, Abbasit Abbas.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we treat proposed resolution number four hundred eighty-seven as a simple resolution.
There is a motion to treat the proposed resolution number four eighty-seven as simple resolution. Juriscan they decide by approval?
Mr. Speaker, uh I move to recognize MP Baieng Mantawil.
MP Baieng Mantawil is recognized for the sponsorship speech of the proposed resolution number four eighty-seven.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I am standing here again with a heart full of gratitude and a deep sense of the honor as I present a resolution, a resolution that seeks e- seeks to express our sincere gratitude and commendation to a man whose dedication to the Bangsa Moro cause is not only admirable, but has become synonymous with his very being, the former Minister Attorney Nagib G. Sinarimbo. Many vo- many of us are familiar to former Minister Nagib's journey, a journey that intertwines with the very fabric of our collective history. For me, one former Minister Attorney Nagib Sinarimbo is not just an outgoing minister. He's a respect for respected figure, a mentor, and a dear friend to many. I've known him during the crucial times when the MILF was negotiating with the Philippine government, much like my father, who also has played a significant role in those challenging yet hopeful moments. As we bid farewell to the attor- to Attorney Nagib in his capacity as the Minister of the Ministry of Interior and Local Government, or MILG, it is crucial to recognize the multifaceted roles he has played in shaping the Bangsa Moro's destiny. Held various key positions aside from his ministerial works, serving as the spokesman of the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao government from its inception, played a very crucial part in the establishment of the United Bangsa Moro Justice Party as as its Deputy Secretary General. Former Minister Sinarimbo's commitment to the Bangsa Moro cause extends beyond his role as a minister. It is deeply rooted in the years he spent as part of the hardworking team of lawyers during the negotiation between the government and the Moro Islamic Liberation Front. Moreover, Attorney Nagib's influence extended beyond the borders of our region as a consultant to Senator Mig Subiri who sponsored the Bangsa Moro Organic Law Bill in the Senate. Attorney Nagib played an integral role in the legislative process. His expertise and tireless efforts were instrumental in the passage of the BOL, a historic achievement that paved the way for the creation of the BARM and its subsequent ratification. In the spirit of unity and gratitude, let this resolution serve as a token of our appreciation to the former minister's exemplary works and accomplishments during his tenure as the first Minister of the Ministry of Interior and Local Government in the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region. As we express our appreciations, gratitude, and commendation to Attorney Nagib Sinarimbo, let us reflect on the significance of recognizing those individuals who have dedicated their lives to shaping the future of the Bangsa Moro. Let us not forget those who have laid the foundation of what the Bangsa Moro struggle have become now. Their tireless efforts, resilience, and unwavering commitment have paved the way for the progress we are witnessing today. May we continue to honor those who have walked the path before us, paving the way for a brighter and more prosperous Bangsa Moro. Thank you and may peace and blessings be upon us all. Wa billahi taufik wal hidayah. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi wa barakatu'ho.
Mr. Speaker, I I see no hands raised to interpolate. I would like to make an omnibus motion to dispense with the period of interpolation and debate and the period of amendment.
There is a motion to dispense with the period of interpolation and debate and the period of amendments. Juriscan they there being no objection, decide by approval?
I move that we approve proposed resolution number four hundred eighty-seven subject to style.
There is a motion to approve uh proposed resolution number four eighty-seven subject to style. Juriscan they there being no objection, decide by approval?
Next, Mr. Speaker, is proposed resolution number four hundred ninety-four. May we request the secretariat to please read the title, the author, and the co-authors?
The secretariat is directed to read the proposed resolution number four ninety-four together with its title and the authors.
Proposed resolution number four hundred ninety-four entitled, Resolution Requesting His Excellency President Ferdinand Bombong R. Marcos Junior through the Judicial and Bar Council, JBC, to appoint judges and vacant Sharia District Courts, SDCs, established under Presidential Degree Number Ten Eight, uh Presidential Degree Ten Eighty-three, otherwise known as the Code of Muslim Muslim Personal Laws of the Philippines. Author, Member of the Parliament, Baintan ng Batuan. Co-authors, Members of the Parliament, Lysalamia, Amilbaharma Wallil, Suarto Ambroto, Don Mustakalong, Rasol Mitmuk Junior, and Rasul Ismael.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer proposed resolution number four hundred ninety-four to the Committee on Bangsa Moro Justice Systems.
There is a motion to refer proposed resolution number four ninety-four to the Committee on Justice System. Juriscan they there being no objection, decide by approval?
Last in the list of proposed resolutions is proposed resolution number four hundred ninety-seven. Mr. Speaker, may we request the secretariat to please read the title and the author?
Secretariat is directed to read the title of proposed issue number four ninety-seven together with its author.
Proposed resolution number four hundred ninety-seven entitled, Resolution Condemning the Tragic Killing of Betty Kadulong Lu and Johnard Lu in Publasyon Pikit North Cotabato, Extending Condolences and Sympathy to the Buried Family and Calling All Concerned Authorities to Expedite the Investigation Surrounding the Incident. Author, Member of the Parliament, Susana Anayatin.
I move that we treat proposed resolution four hundred ninety-seven as a simple resolution.
There is a motion to treat proposed resolution number four ninety-seven as a more resolution. Juriscan they there being no objection, decide by approval?
Mr. Speaker, may we recognize Member of the Parliament Susana Anayatin to speak some words about the proposed resolution?
MP Susana Anayatin is recognized for sponsorship remarks.
My colleagues in this parliament, good afternoon again. Mr. Speaker, once again, I stand before you to denounce the heartless act of killing an innocent person. On January nine, a senior citizen, Betty Kadulong Lu and his and her son, Johnard Lu, were fatally shot in Pikit North Cotabato. Betty and her son, Johnard, were reportedly at their halal eatery when the incident occurred. According to the locals, the eatery has been serving customers for significant period, and the disease has been longstanding resident in the area for decades. Reports indicate that authorities are investigating possible sources for the killing. However, irrespective of the reasons, taking someone's life is never acceptable. Mr. Speaker, a series of similar events over the past years is deeply alarming. Those responsible for these incidents must be held accountable as swiftly as possible. Justice should not remain a mere idea of a thing but must be manifested in reality. It is crucial that the princ- principles of both the rule of law and the rule of God are firmly grounded and instilled in each individual. This way, there will be no fear of living, only a reverence for the divine being. In conclusion, Mr. Speaker, the adaption of this resolution is essential to formally express condemnation, extend condolences, and call for expedited action from concerned authorities in response to the tragic killing of Betty Kadulong Lu and Johnard Lu in Publasyon Pikit North Cotabato. This resolution aligns with the values of justice, compassion, and community well-being, urging a united effort to address and prevent such grievous acts. Hence, the earnest passage of this resolution is sought. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. There being no interpolator, I move to terminate the period of I move to dispense the period of interpolation.
The floor, the floor has moved for the dispensation of uh the period of interpolation and debate. How about the period of amendment? There being no interpolator?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, I move to terminate the period of amendment.
And uh to include the period of amendment, any second? Having been seconded and hearing no objection, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move to approve ru- uh resolution four nine seven subject to style.
Yeah, before I approve, uh can anyone move that we are included also as co-authors of this uh uh resolution? This is a very uh uh important resolution of expressing our condolences to the victim of the.
Mr. Speaker, the floor uh moves that uh all members of parliament present in this session be included as uh authors of this uh.
Secretariat?
Resolution.
Please take note. Now, uh there is now a motion from the floor to approve and adopt proposed resolution four ninety-seven. Having been seconded and hearing no objection, the proposed resolution number four hundred ninety-seven is approved and adopted by the BTA Parliament in session.
Mr. Speaker, we are now uh under item nine uh resolutions referred to the committee. Uh, we will have uh now the presentation of committee report of the Committee on Health, and may we recognize uh the vice chairperson of the Committee on Health, MP Dr. Hashimi Delenggalen.
The gentleman from Northern Kabuntalan and Cotabato City is recognized.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Um Speaker Attorney Pangalian M. Balindong, Deputy Speakers, Presiding Officers, Colleagues in the Parliament, ladies and gentlemen, assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wa barakatu'. Mr. Speaker, it is with pleasure that I present to you Committee Report Number Forty-five of the Committee on Health under the chairmanship of MP Dr. Kadeel Sinulinding. Committee Report Number Forty-five contains the resolution of the Committee on Health on proposed resolution number three hundred four, or resolution urging the Ministry of Health to strengthen the voluntary blood donation program and blood transfusion services in the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao. During the committee meeting on August twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, Dr. Surgeon Kalim, the. Doctor Sherjan Kalim, the blood bank head of Cotabato Regional Medical Center, said that two hundred fifty million is needed annually for the M O E of the municipal blood center. He further said that, that the C R M C has no partnership with the Philippine National Red Cross, but there are ongoing initiatives to ensure blood availability for the residents of Island Province. For instances, a hospital in Zamboanga City has agreed to accept and handle blood donations from the residents of Basilan and a proposal to establish a Sulu Provincial Blood Center. Meanwhile, the C O H has also approved a proposal to create a technical working room with an aim to strengthen the blood services in the region. Mr. Speaker, Republic Act Number Seven Seven One Nine, or the National Blood Service Act of nineteen ninety four, provides ways on how to strengthen blood services such as by promote nation by citizens, citizenry and to instill public consciousness of the principal, principle that blood donation is a human, humanitarian act, informing the pla- public of the need for voluntary, voluntary blood donation to curb the hazards caused by the commercial sale of blood, blood, the benefits and rationale of voluntary blood donation in existing health subjects of the formal education system in all public and private school, in the elementary, high school, and college levels, as well as the non-formal education system, mobilizing all sectors of the community to participate in mechary and nonprofit collection of blood and strengthening blood services network by building more blood banks or blood centers and upgrading of existing blood banks or blood centers to include preventive services and education to constru- to control spread of blood transfusion transmissible diseases. Mr. Speaker, the establishment of blood bank centers to strengthen blood services network in the region is one of the primary objectives of this resolution. While National Blood Service Act of nineteen ninety four provide for the establishment of a blood bank center in every province nationwide, the implementation of this provision of law remains to be seen in the B A R M. According to the information we have, there are only two blood bank centers, center that serve the residents of the region. One is the Cotabato Regional and Medical Center, which has been designated as the lead blood service facility in Region twelve and B A R M per Department of Health Memorandum Number Twenty Sixteen Zero Four Five One, and the other one is in Sulu. Mr. Speaker, an adequate and safe supply of blood is an integral component of a healthcare system. There are many patients every day who need safe blood transfusion. By ensuring the, the accessibility and availability of safe blood, we can save many lives. Thus, I strongly encourage the members of this august body to support this resolution as well as other initiatives that seek to strengthen blood services. Thank you. Wassalamualaikum Warahmatullahi Talaw Barakatuh.
Mr. Speaker, I move to adopt Committee Report Number Forty Five for deliberation.
There is a motion to adopt Committee Report Number Forty Five for deliberation any second. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, I move to open the period of interpolation.
Are there interpolators who have signified to interpolate?
Mr. Speaker, there being no interpolator, I move to dispense with the period of interpolation.
There being no interpolators and upon motion of the floor leader, uh, the period of uh, interpolation is dispensed.
Necessarily, Mr. Speaker, I also move to dispense with the period of amendment.
There is now a motion from the floor to dispense the period of amendment. It's been seconded. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, with the assurance of all members present here to cooperate and to donate blood also, uh, which is uh, the very subject of this uh, resolution, I move that we approve this resolution, commit the, Proposed Resolution Three O Five, subject to style, Mr. President.
There is a motion from the floor leader to approve and adopt Proposed Resolution Number Three Zero Four. It's been seconded, subject to style.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, there being no other matter in our order of business, uh, the floor leader would like to make a manifestation and, and to consult the members of the uh, parliament with regards to our schedule for tomorrow, uh, febra- uh, February, January seventeen and eighteen. Um, considering that we have simultaneous uh, conduct of public consultations uh, uh, be, uh, this week and next week, and uh, in, in fact, uh, some of our colleagues are already uh, in the field uh, con- uh, attending the public consultations. Uh, may I?
There's already a memo from the speaker.
Ah, okay. So, uh, with that, uh, I just learned about that and I, I would like to thank our speaker for very, for being so active and already, and has in fact already issued the necessary uh, uh, memorandum. So, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Speaker Pangalian Balindong for the memorandum that you have issued. So, I will now uh, withdraw my concern with regards to this particular matter.
So, session is adjourned until the next session in February?
Uh, adjourned until February nineteen, twenty twenty three, four, Mr. Speaker.
Until further notice?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Until further notice. Session is adjourned until further notice from the office of the speaker.
May I also request the member?